Second, 2018. And this is the Finance Budget and Audit Committee. So first, I want to welcome my fellow committee members to the 2018-2019 edition of this committee. You know, Andrew Clark, welcome back. And then to the rest of us, this is going to be our first time being on Finance Committee, or at least the rest of us weren't on Finance Committee last year. And so, you know, we're not going to get everything right all the time. We're going to be asking a lot of questions. We're going to be trying to learn as much as we can. So I just want to ask that everybody have patience with us, but I'm really excited about this group, really excited about the people that are here, and I'm really excited about the potential for kind of trying to make some lasting change. So for this meeting, we're going to have the Treasury present first about revenue projections for 2018 and potentially beyond. Then the city auditor will present about the current state of the city finances. Then we'll hear from any city departments or representatives of those departments or of the labor unions that would like to speak to us. And so, first, yeah, so first, I just want to invite up then Chuck Barlow, Tim Maloney, whichever ones would like to be here, and we'll hear from you.
Chuck's camera shining.
Chuck's the former chair of the Finance Committee, so I know he likes being in the spotlight there.
Yes. No, it's not. Thank you, James. A couple of things. I had talked to James and asked him to, if he could find time in this meeting for me to speak to you guys, so I appreciate you. Let me, let me show up here. There's a couple of things I want to do. As James said, I want, there's kind of three things that are on my agenda. And the first is to talk to you about our earnings tax forecast for this year and how we go about that in a little more detail than we typically talk about. And so, we'll talk about that for a couple of minutes, and I won't take a whole lot of time. The second is the budget for 2018 for our two departments, the Treasury Department 610 and the Earnings Tax Department 620. So there's a couple of changes we want to do and move some things around. And so, I wanted to go through in detail with you guys as to what we're going to do. The third thing that's, I think, is kind of on my plate is the Key 89, which is the property tax investment incentive agreement stuff. And we've not closed the 2017 tax year yet, and we will by the end of January when the fourth quarterly payments are due. And the three companies that have incentive agreements, we should be able to help Jim and zero in on the number that we're going to owe those folks in August, at least the big ones in August. I'm not sure when we pay the other ones. But we'll give you a decent number, you know, late January, early February, we can dump that in. I don't even know what's in there now that the previous council passed at the end of the year, but we'll zero in on the number. There's still one company that gets some money back that we don't have their fourth quarter payment yet, so I don't know the final number. So I'll get with you on that here in a couple of weeks. And so, hold my feet to the fire if you don't see anything from me. So the first thing is our earnings tax forecast. And then instead of just speaking, I asked Chuck to pass out here just an extremely simple worksheet showing you what we did. And then kind of the procedure for the method we use in trying to estimate what this year's earnings tax collection is going to be, so our forecast for this year. So just like every expense line item, as Jim will tell you over and over, it's going to change. One things we know, this isn't going to be the exact number by the time we get to the end of the year. And we did tip off Jim a little bit last week. I think Chuck, you talked to him and gave him this 18.5 number, but this just kind of lays it out for you. And so, if you look at 2016, 2017, and then our forecast for '18, in 2016, we set a record for most tax dollars collected, 16,154. 2017, we beat that record by about $2.4 million, up to 18.5. And this year, we think it's going to be about the same, 18.5. If you look at, and I'll jump around a little bit, I'm sure, but if you look at what the state of Ohio, the auditor, the Financial Commission is using for 2018, it's 17,300, 17.1 plus 1%, whatever that is, 17,266 or something like that. So it'll be council and the commission deciding what they're, we're going to put in our recovery plan. But what I'm here to tell council is, it's our estimate, and then you guys can use what you want to use, but it's our estimate that it's going to be about flat, so about 18.5. And it's easy to say just, oh, it's going to be flat, but we do a couple of, a deeper dive, I should say, than that. And so, the second page what I gave you is an alphabetical listing of the 50 companies, the top 50 companies, based on their withholding tax that they pay the city. So you might want to say these are the biggest 50 companies. So certainly if you're, if you're measuring it by payroll dollars, so amount of employees and salary or wage, so if you measure it like that, and the 2% they owe the city, these are the 50 largest companies. So we take that list of 50, and those 50 companies, they account for about 2/3 of the withholding tax the city collects, okay? So if you, if you look at that, you can see withholding and net profit, kind of the things businesses bring to the city. I mean, it's consistently 92, 94, it's in the 90s since I've done this job the last, well, I'm starting my 21st year, right? So it's always 90% of what we collect comes directly from companies located in the city. So as James and Leslie have heard me say before, so when, when you hear about people talking about business friendly, or you hear the importance the mayor or Joe Gears, those guys put on drawing businesses to the city, this is a direct reflection of that. Our money and the bulk of our budget comes from businesses in the city, so it's really important. And the numbers stay fairly consistent over the years, okay? So what we did is we looked at these top 50 companies, and we sat with Mark Reason, Jerry Stoker, the two guys in the building department, you know, that knew, know what's on tap and what's coming up, and the mayor and Joe Gears. We sat with them and say, hey, what do you guys know that we don't? And, you know, in 2018, there's not going to be any home runs, so no big companies are going to move here. The things that we know about, the Pay Corps, the possible CDK expansion, the Xavier stuff, we might start building that in '18, but as far as collecting any money from employees, it really won't put a dent on '19. So I didn't consider any of those in our 18,500, okay? If they happen to move here, the TriHealth, you know, the flex buildings, 5, 6, and 7, none of that is considered here either. So when TriHealth, you know, I mean, you've heard numbers anywhere from, what, 300 to 800 new jobs, or 300 to 800 jobs there. Whether some of those are relocations from other TriHealth facilities in the city, there are several, or they're new, I don't have a good feel for that, nor do I have a good feel finally when are they going to move into that place. So none of that is in here, okay? On the downside, we know a couple of things. We know that Big Division of Rumki is moving out of the city this year. We know that SHP Design is moving out of the city this year, and the EPA, they're moving all their people out of the city this year. So, and you'll find all, I speak to those because those are on the top 50 list. It's like anything else. We'll probably have some people move here that we don't know about today, and the mayor doesn't know, or Jerry or Mark doesn't know about. And there's probably going to be companies leave us, you know, but this is what we know right now. And, you know, we'll work with you guys, and we'll work with Jim if we need to adjust this number as we go. So I started with 2017 and the numbers they brought in, and then I estimated when the three companies that we know are going to be leaving us this year, I estimated when they're going to leave us, okay? So we have a little information on that. And then, so I took those numbers out, and then I added 1% to everything else, so 1% growth to everything else. And that's pretty consistent to what we've been using with the state of Ohio and the Financial Commission, a 1% growth each year. Be great if it's 2%, 4%, or from 17 to, or I'm sorry, 16 to 17, it was almost 15%, right? I mean, how awesome would that be? But right now, a nice conservative, little bit of growth. It's hard to say you're going to keep breaking records every, every year, right? We have the last two years in a row. So I think, you know, doing the math, the pure math of what I just told you, and that's the last line of my procedure here. So when we did that, it came to about 18.6, so I used 18.5, just because I'm a bean counter, right? And so, just a little bit conservative. So I'd love for the numbers to come, each month, we give you a little report, and so I'd love to show more growth than that. And when the time's right, we'll change our number, up or down. Over the years, we've done both, and just go from there. So what we told Jim last week, what we're going to suggest to the state of Ohio is to use the 18.5. Now, I have to tell you, if in 2018, on that report, they use 18.5, and they use 1% growth in the next three years after that, three and a half years, you know, the length of this, this five-year, 60-month plan that we've got to do, that's a lot of money. I mean, it's 6, 7, 8 million dollars more over that time than what's on the paper today. So my suggestion today isn't to do that, but it's, it's going to be a big number if, you know, as you see it rolling through the general fund and all that kind of stuff. So hopefully, we'll have these numbers to play with, and we don't have to lower our estimate, and then you guys would have to, what, a new certificate of revenue to the, to the county, and then lower the budget, and all those ugly things that we hate to do. But this, this is our number, okay? So do we have any questions on earnings tax, or what we're doing, or any? And I'd encourage you, if there's any questions, even if you want to take a look at this and give Chuck a call or me a call, that's, that's no issues at all. James?
So, yeah, do you think I have any questions for?
Not this time, no.
So I did have one question.
James said you have one?
Oh, you did have one.
Yeah. What's the best time to reach in the office?
Chuck's there every day, and I'm not.
Okay, thank you.
But you could send me an email. I'll respond to emails, right? So it's tmaloney@norwood-ohio.com, the same as everybody's, right?
Thanks.
So I just had a question about interest, and in the past that we had seen, I mean, not a whole lot, but we'd seen, you know, some money from interest into our general fund. I was just curious if you know, are we going to try to do things to take advantage of some of the capital that we have to try to get some more of that?
I hope so. So, you know, in years past, interest income, some years, we made some decent money. The last couple of years, we haven't. And so, there's a couple of things that have to happen, right, before you can invest the city's money. First, you have to have excess cash. And over the last three or four years, Jim knows better than me, there hasn't been a whole lot of excess cash to invest. And if you do have some excess cash laying around, you kind of have to have a cash flow program or plan out there that says, hey, look, we're going to be spending this on these weeks, and this in these months, and by quarter or by year. And it's like anything else, you know, in your, in your personal investments, the longer the timeframe, usually, the better interest rate you get. So, you know, if you invest $1 million in, for 12 months, you get a little better interest rate than $1 million for a day, you know? So we've not been successful the last couple of years to have any excess cash to invest, or a long-drawn-out, reliable cash flow plan, you know? And so, not in the last couple of years, but it hasn't been too long ago where we were kind of looking as to how much money are we going to collect so could we make payroll Friday? And I think we did, all but one time in the last several years, but some were very close. So when you're dealing in an atmosphere like that, it's hard to say, well, give me a half a million, or a million, or $2 million to invest. However, I think things are changing a little bit. And so, we had US Bank in here in December, and talked about two things. So, I'm sorry, let me take a step back. So I could have invested in a couple of things, real quick turnaround, at extremely low interest rates. By leaving the money in US Bank, we got a lot of service credits. So when you did the math, our monthly bank charges were a lot less because they gave us credits, because they had our money in their bank. They gave us service credit, and our net-net service, or, yeah, bank fee, monthly bank fee, was a lot lower. So I chose to go that route, keeping our expenses down, then taking the money out of their bank and invest in it somewhere, when with the way interest rates have been over the last couple of years, we weren't going to make as much money as we were getting out of US Bank and reduce service credits. So there's a couple of things now. So like I said, Chuck and I met with the bank, and we did, in December, we did an exhaustive, line-by-line, account-by-account review of our bank statement. And one of the, one of the major things we pay bank fees on is, believe it or not, FDIC insurance on the money we have in their bank. And it's a daily thing you pay, right? And that is, I don't know, about 1/3 of our banking fees. I might be overstating a little bit, but it's a good number, right? And so, the state of Ohio has this plan called Star Ohio, where literally, every single day, if you want to, you could put money in before you leave that night, and that next morning, if you need the money, you could take it back out. It's pretty automated. And quite frankly, the interest rates are getting to where it's probably a better deal for us to do some Star Ohio stuff, and not leave it all at US Bank. So part of our discussion, other than the line-by-line banking fee thing with US Bank is, hey, what if every, every day I take out 4, 5, 6, 7 million dollars, 2, 3, 4 million dollars, whatever I can take out that day, still cover our outstanding checks, and all those kinds of things, right? And so, I think, working with the bank and working with the state, we're going to be able to take care of that, or take advantage of that this year. And you'll see a little bit of interest. And if I take money out of the bank and invest it with the state of Ohio, and it'll be like anything else, Jim will say, hey, I'm not going to need this million dollars for seven weeks, two quarters, whatever it is, I get a little better interest rate, right, than I'm going to need it Friday. I could still do it, but it won't get that much. And the combination then of lower bank fees, because we're transferring the money out, and our FDIC insurance will be less. So we're working on that. So right now, in the appropriations, I'm sure there's no interest income in there?
Correct.
And even in the state of Ohio plan, there's no interest income in there. Interest income, 15, $20,000 a year, maybe? So it's not like it's going to be a couple hundred thousand bucks, but 15, 20 grand is 15, 20 grand, right? And so, so more on that as we muddle through these next 30 or 60 days. But I think we'll have some, some positive news for you there, James.
Great, yeah, thank you. Yeah, it was just because I had noticed, like, in the general fund, in 2007, there was 245,000 in interest earned, and 2008, there were 158,000. So that, and I'm sure those could have been multi-year deals.
So, no, so what happened there, if you remember, and it's in retrospect, it's, it's, it's something that happened that got us to where we're at today, is we borrowed $6 million worth of bonds, $8 million worth of bonds, to do road repairs. 6 million back then.
That's interest on those bonds.
That's exactly right. So I was able to take that money, and, you know, that, what cities have to invest in is pretty narrow. It's not what we can invest in, you know? It's T bills, and farm credits, and things like that, you know, all federal, fully insured, blah, 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 which means the interest rate's going to be low. It's not like playing the stock market or anything like that, that you see all these gains in your 401K or whatever, right? And so, back then, that's exactly what that was. It was those millions of, literally, it was millions of dollars for several years that we were investing.
Excellent. Now that answers that question, so I appreciate it.
Okay.
Would you mind if I ask you a question?
No, absolutely.
So just to clarify, on the 18.5 million dollars, I know that people hear that number, and that's great, you know, good lumped money coming in, but that's gross receipts.
Absolutely.
So that is not, that does not include the money that we do need to segregate into Fund 89.
That's right, and that's what I was saying. We'll give you whatever the expense is going to be on the expense side, while giving you an estimate of that too.
So when I'm figuring our certificate of estimated resources, which says how much money we have to actually spend, I don't use 18.5 million. What I'm doing is looking at, since we're going to be relatively flat, I look at the revenue that came into Fund 89 in 2017, and I can take that off that 18.5 million. Because what we show is actual revenue in the general fund in 2017 was 17,266,000, because as the money comes to us from you, we have to take some of it and put it into that special fund to reimburse.
The way, the way I look at that is, just like you take some of that into the firefighter's key, you put it in Key 89 to disperse, just like in, for salt, for snowy roads, you take that money and you put that into key, this is the same thing. So the proper accounting, I don't know, I know the proper accounting for us is what we collect, we collect. And if council decides to bring a new business in, and they, they want to do a deal with this business to attract them here, right? And they say, I tell you what, for every million dollars in a new building, we'll give you $100,000 back. It's got nothing to do with earnings tax, but it is some kind of property investment agreement, right? That's the way it used to be. It used to be, hey, look, if you add this many heads, like we have with Sensei Bell all those years, if you add this many heads, and your fixed assets increase this much, then you get some money back. So in all those years, we reported whatever Sensei Bell gave us, and then they cut them a check out of some fund, right? Here, what council decided to do a couple of years ago is, you know what, I don't care if you add 10 people or 100 people, I want the wages to go up X amount. And whether you're going to pay 100 people $10,000 a year, or 10 people $100,000 a year, I don't care. But we want the wages to be this, because we want our 2%. And if your wages stay at this level or go above, for one company, we're going to give you a 50% rebate. And that's after you have to go through all the refunds, and people that work here, people that have Norwood taxes taken out, but they worked outside of the city, and all those kinds of things. So Chuck and the Pay Corps people in this case, you know, they sit down and they figure all this out, right? And so, 18.5 is the earnings tax collection. Where we spend the money, if it's Fund 89, or Fund 10, or 590, that's up to you guys. And so, you know, I'm, I'm going to try to help with 610 and 620, and 89. And that's what I'll give you the numbers. So in a couple of years, that'll go away. Maybe we'll be here, maybe we won't be here.
That'll be nice.
That'll be nice. I mean, it'll be several million dollars that we send back.
Right.
It's, it's not pennies. You can look at what's in your, the budget that the previous council just passed, what's in 89 right now, a couple million bucks.
Yeah, the cash balance of 89 right now is $1,301,529.01. So it's that much less. When we look at the money that came in in 2017, the general fund got that much less from the earnings tax coming in. So when you plug that number, 18.5, into the plan, you either have to plug in that number minus what's going to Fund 89, or further down the plan show transfer into Fund 89.
That's the way I would show it.
Yeah. So it's, unfortunately, that's because we were doing it the second way, and the state kind of said to do it a different way, but basically, that's it, you know? It has to be one or another, it just balances.
It'll be a big number in that key on the expense side, there's no doubt about it.
It's still a nice, healthy amount coming in.
It'll be a couple million, there's no doubt. And even by taking that out, these are still record-setting numbers.
They are.
Believe it or not.
Even, even taking that out, even taking that out, 12.92% increase in what the general fund saw from earnings tax. That's huge. 15% overall, but some of that went to Fund 89.
I say this to some of the county people and the, and the other politicians in other cities, and they think I'm lying to them. So it's, it's been very successful, and thank goodness, because it's helping us crawl out of this hole.
Another encouraging part of that is that we were estimating for 2017 in the fiscal recovery plan that it was going to be 1.6 million was going to be that earnings tax refund. And of the earnings tax that we took in, it actually only was 1.3 million, so.
So in the 17 budget, what we paid outright was based on what we collected in '16, and it's really not even what you collect. It's the tax year. So as I said to Jim earlier, you know, we don't have the fourth quarter '17 stuff in, and here we are, three weeks into '18, right? And so, so it's, it's based on the tax year, '17, and that's what we'll disperse in '18. So once, once we go through the math here in a couple of weeks, we'll have a pretty solid number that we'll know what that number's going to be, and whatever the proper month that we pay it out. I know Pay Corps is in August. Yeah, and the other two, I'm not sure.
We could figure the same thing, the gross amount, but then after April, 15, 3 funds.
Yeah, there might be a change.
We'll have the max number.
Yeah, it'll, it'll be tiny.
I'm sure that 1.3 will cover it.
So the receipts, so we had 1.3, I mean, I got, I guess, I should have rephrased that. The receipts in Fund 89 for last year was 1.3 million. So is that going to likely be what, about what we pay out then, whatever we received in it for the year 2017?
Yes.
Okay.
That's a ballpark. Yeah. It'll be a little bit more than that.
So any, like, earnings tax stuff that we get now, even though they might have been collected from employees in the fourth quarter 2017, those earnings taxes get applied to 2018, is that correct?
Well, for the revenue side, yes, right? Because we're, we, the day we collected is when we added to this 18.5. What year it's for, and again, it's just this, these investment incentive agreements that are based on the tax year. So it gets a little funky there, but when we collect the money is when it goes into the revenue side. It goes to those expense keys when you guys appropriate the money out, and that's why it can change, you know, over time, whenever you guys do that.
Withholding payments are due by the 15th of the month after, and then the quarterly, the quarterly payments are due the last day of the first month after the end of the quarter. So the quarterlies aren't due until January 31st. So now they start, some start rolling in, but, yeah.
Thank you for this, Leslie. I think it's really neat to have the businesses. You mentioned three, though, that were leaving, and I was, I wanted to run them down, I missed.
So the EPA, and SHP Design, and the last one is Rumki. And so, what Rumki does over on Highland, I guess the address is?
Highland and Beach. Highland and Beach.
Highland and Beach, right? So, what they do, they do two things. One, they store portlets in that big building. And the second thing they do is they build, um, containers, um, you know, big metal containers, and they build those there. And so, if you've been following along, you saw that, uh, Runkie did a deal with Corrine Township, and bought a whole bunch of property across the street from the massive landfill hill. And that division that builds those containers is moving out there, they're building a new building to do that in, out to their corporate headquarters. So, um, it's, it's, it's a decent enough number that it's on our top 50, right? And when that's gonna happen in 18, uh, they just said, hey, it's gonna happen in 18. Um, I don't know if that, you know, so, if it's not till the third quarter, right, we'll collect, you know, a half a year's worth of stuff, and, you know, while, while they're here, we'll still collect the money, so it won't be a complete shutout. But those are the three companies, EPA, Runkie, and SHP Design.
So, I think the question that many residents are gonna have, are the portlets going to, or are they staying?
As far as I know, they're staying. I mean, they own that land, they own the building.
Gotcha.
I don't think they lease that, I think they own that. So, they're using that for, uh, storage, I guess.
Bad news, thank you.
Okay, so, I'd encourage, if there are any questions about earnings tax, that you shout out to Chuck or I, you know, during the year. So, the second thing I wanted to talk about, I've got a, a one-page handout, is, uh, so I'm, I'm switching hats, kind of, to a department head now, is, uh, is our, our budget, uh, and, and what's in front of you is just a summary. Did you get one?
I did, I did, I was hoping you might be able to pass one back, I know they were interested.
Do you have one?
Yeah.
So, um, so this is, uh, just a summary of our budget. Um, and again, when you guys look at this, and on the finance committee, I'm sure you'll see, there's, you know, there's, in my 57 100s, in the treasure, there's six, or eight, or 10 accounts in there, line items. I just summarized all those, okay? And so, um, so we'll, we'll cut to the chase, uh, and, basically, if, if you look at 610, which is the treasurer's side of the business, right? We have the earnings tax side, and the treasurer's side, so two real departments that, that are in the office down there. The treasurer's side, uh, they, we spent 151,944 in 2016, so 152,000 dollars. You with me there? And then, in, last year, we spent 131,000 dollars. What's in the current appropriations right now, that was, again, passed in December, is 137, and we wanna make it 144. Okay? Uh, I'll go back and explain some of the detail in a minute. On the earnings tax department, uh, in 2016, we spent 327,000 dollars, and 2017, 277. What's in the current appropriations right now is 301, and I wanna make it 304. So, another 3,000 dollars. In total, downstairs, on my side of the hallway then, uh, 2016, we spent 479, 408, 2017, uh, the appropriations right now are 438, and I wanna make it 448. So, a couple of things, um, is that, uh, is, is that the reason 2017 is down is mainly, uh, we lost a couple of people in the office that we haven't been able to replace yet. So, uh, the personal services, which is, you know, their wages, uh, their insurances, all those kinds of things squish into that number, um, that's the biggest reason, uh, it's down from 16 to 17. But, what I wanna do is this, is that, uh, we're currently missing, uh, a tax clerk in our office, which is paid for in the earnings tax key, 620. And we're missing, uh, a general clerk that's out in front, that waits, mainly, it's a customer service, with some accounting work, uh, that was Matthew, the last year, year and a half, uh, that sits right, right there. So, um, our tax clerk left us, uh, at the end of the summer, actually transferred to the water department, that's a union position, and Matthew left us to go to work at Cintas back in, uh, uh, December, unfortunately. So, those, those two positions, still today, sit empty. I just said that the, uh, tax clerk is a union position. So, uh, Mr. Gears posted that position, you know, just like in normal union rules, and went off of that, and nobody signed the list this time. Um, the last, it, it's been a revolving door in that union tax clerk position. Um, it is some heavy-duty accounting. I mean, you're sitting there, and you've got stacks of tax returns you're entering, you're answering the phone, talking to people, and typically, when people call the tax department, they're not happy. Okay? So, it's that kind of job. And over the years, when a union person retired, or moved to another city, bumped and moved to another city department, Joe would post, Joe Gears would post the list, we would get somebody, we would bring them in, we would train them, and after some months, or a year or so, they're like, let me out of here. Let me, let me out of here, you know? And, and so, uh, with, uh, Tom Linder's position, like I said, he, he moved over to the water department, uh, we've been sitting empty, looking for someone to fill that union position. The list was posted, or, I'm sorry, the, the job, I was gonna say job posting was posted, the, the, you know, so that was done, uh, and no one from the union signed that position. So, that got Chuck thinking, and then, then me thinking, um, how am I gonna solve this problem? So, uh, this is how I wanna try to solve the problem. I wanna take the union position away from 620 earnings tax, and move that into 610, and make that more of a customer service general clerk. And I wanna take the appointed position, which was the Matthew, and move it to the more heavy-duty tax department, make that the appointed one. So, flip those two. Um, if it was that easy, and didn't have any effect on that, I would've just went to Keith Moore and Tim Gary, and said, what do I gotta do? I would've sat with the union people, and said, what do I gotta do? Uh, but, the, the tax clerk is gonna cost me more money than what Matthew made as the general clerk. And so, that's the biggest reason that in total, the dollars are up from what the, another 10 grand a year, uh, 438 to 448. Now, there's some pluses and minuses in here. Um, the other thing is, is if you just look at these numbers, you could say, man, in 2017, you guys spent 408,000 dollars, and, uh, again, that's with, you know, a couple of heads down for part of the year. This year, you want 448, that's a 40,000 dollar increase from what you spent in 2017. Um, there's an excellent reason for that, other than paying the one position more money than, than it was being paid for in 2017, um, is that, in this assumption, we assumed for both unfilled position, full health coverage for family. Now, um, our people, both our people, didn't have family coverage, and then they were missing, right? Uh, so, I assume the new healthcare rates for 10 months, because even, I'm, I'm here today, uh, but we, there's still some hoops to jump through, so I'm hoping to get this done by March the 1st. Um, so, 10 months' worth of those positions being filled, at full family health coverage. That's 36,458 of my 40,472 difference. So, 36,000 of the 40,000 change is because of increased health coverage. Now, that's rate, that's going from single to family, and it's a full 10 months for both positions. So, it, it's, it's a big number, you know, because at first glance, that's what I said to Chuck, oh my God, it's gonna cost me 40 grand more? Now, still, a lot less than I operated the department in 2016, lot less, right? But, uh, what's the 40 grand? And the 40 grand is us assuming the worst case, as far, in this, in this budget right here, our budget request, uh, assuming family coverage for the full 10 months of both positions. So, I'll be happy to come back and say, hey, we found somebody that only needed single coverage, and all or both, and then this number will be a lot less, and we'll make the adjustment, you know, to whatever the real number is. But, instead of just dropping in a single coverage, like my department's been running on, I thought I'd give you guys kind of the worst-case health insurance, uh, that way it can only go the other way, and, and be a little bit better, if, uh, we happen to hire people that don't need full family coverage. So, um, there's a couple of things I need to do to get this done. Uh, one is, I have to sit with the union, and say, hey, I wanna move one of your clerks from the earnings tax department to the deck, the, the desk next to that, and move them to the treasurer's department. My suggestion would be, then, is to repost the position, because now, the current union, they might have some members that'll be like, yeah, I'm interested in that, I, I'm not interested in the tax clerk. I've talked to, uh, Tom, and to Nancy, and, uh...
Dale.
Dale. I don't want any part of that, those are the last three tax clerks, right, that are still in the union. I don't want any part of that. So, maybe they'll want this other position. And so, uh, my suggestion is gonna be, uh, hey, union, you're not gonna lose any funding, any positions, but it's a different, uh, your drop, job description is gonna be different. It's more customer service. So, maybe they'll have a, a current union member be interested in bumping that position, and that'll be all good. On the other hand, making the other position the appointed position, uh, I can go advertise, I can interview, uh, what I hope to be qualified tax, uh, tax clerk. Uh, you know, we're a member of SWOT, Chuck goes to the, the Southwest Ohio Tax Administrators, I mean, that, you talk about a fun luncheon to go to. Uh, but Chuck, uh, takes one for the team, and he goes to that, and, uh, and so, I can advertise with them, they always have, I think, you know, Springfield has a position open, and they're, you know, so there's different positions open. So, hopefully, we can hire somebody, and go through the normal interview process, and get that done. I did already meet with, uh, Mr. Gears, and he didn't see an issue. Uh, I met with Tim Gary, and their only question is, on the, on the Serb side, on the state union stuff, whether we have to report that, that this position is now being paid out of another key or not. Um, I find that hard to believe, we would have to do that, but they wanted to check, so, Tim, Tim Gary and Keith are kinda in the loop. One thing we'd have to do, um, besides making a, uh, an appropriations adjustment, moving some dollars from one key to the other, uh, and increasing this a little bit, one thing we would have to do is, uh, I can't get my notes here, sorry, um, is change the current ordinance, because there is not a, in, in, um, let me see here, it's in this stack, uh, all the city's appointed people are still being paid out of ordinance number 33, 2009. That's the last time these, uh, uh, salary ranges were set way back in 2009. None of the appointed people have gotten raises since 2009, uh, you know, all those that, well, very few, I should say. Uh, but all that was set up in, in ordinance 33, 2009, but there isn't a tax clerk with the salary range there. So, we're gonna come to council, uh, as long as the union's okay, uh, Keith Moore and Tim, the wall department's okay, uh, we're gonna come to council saying, hey, we'd like you to add a, a, in section one, add, uh, add a tax clerk to this. That way, I can, I can hire somebody in, in that, uh, for 620 earnings tax, uh, and then hopefully, fill the other position, because somebody in the, in the current union, um, uh, would be interested. If not, um, I think we go through the normal, uh, collect resumes, interview people, and say, hey, this is a union position, uh, and, and we'll interview them, and hire them as, as a union person, however that works. So, uh, either way, so, uh, I come to you guys to, uh, to, to request, and however I'm gonna do that, I don't know the proper way, saying, hey, I, I'd like my, um, budget, uh, whenever you guys do your first, because like I said, this isn't gonna happen till at best, the 1st of March, something like that. So, whenever you change, you know, have your first appropriations change, uh, you know, we, we get these numbers through, and, uh, hopefully, I get somebody in here, so they get some training before April, May, which is our busy season, you know, doing tax returns and stuff. Lots of stuff I just talked about, lots of stuff. So, um, are there questions about, uh, these positions, or the hiring process, or anything like that? Again, I would encourage you, that if you wanna take a look and say, Tim, I, I looked at this, I still have a couple of questions, to call Chuck or to call me, uh, send us an email, um, and we'll get back to you.
Gotcha. Does anybody have any questions for...
I do have one.
Yes.
Other than the ordinance needing to change to include the new position and the salary, would it create disparity with the other roles and the ranges that already exist?
No. So, um, so, our proposal on the tax clerk is gonna be a salary range from 18 to 22 dollars, somewhere in there. And so, that's, uh, if you look at the, the, and I know you don't have in front of you the 2009 ordinance, but, uh, the salary range, or annual salary ranges, because this, this will be, uh, this, this will be an exempted position, so no overtime, this will be a salaried position. I'm not talking about the union position, I'm talking about the tax clerk side, right? And so, uh, it's 37,440 to 45,760, 45,760, so 18 to 22 dollars. We hope to hire somebody in there. What if we've been, uh, we've been paying for that position, the union position, anywhere between 21 dollars and 34 cents on the low end, and 2287 on the high end? Uh, we did look, uh, in, at the City of Cincinnati, and they have two levels of accounting tax, or tax clerks in this case. Their level two is 20 dollars and 71 cents to 2241, and their level three that fill this position is 2278 to 24 dollars and 16 cents an hour. So, 18 to 22 dollars is kinda on the low end compared to the union, and compared with the city is. Honestly, I don't know what the heck we have to pay. Hopefully, in there. That seems to be, uh, a reasonable number, 20 bucks, little plus, little minus, something like that. Um, I, I don't know, we have, we haven't started looking, you know, we're just kinda putting this together now. So, uh, so the first place I looked, like I said, is, what have I been paying, you know, with the union? And then, what's out there? And, uh, a quick review, uh, we're about where everybody else is, maybe a little lower than everybody else, but about right.
I have one follow-up to that. So, however the position gets posted, would you be the person who makes the final offer?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and again, I, uh, I told you guys my email, so, you know, anybody you know, or anybody listening, I guess, you can send a resume to T. Maloney, M-O-L-O-N-Y, uh, at norwood-ohio.com, and I'll collect the resumes. We've not collected one resume yet, because we haven't started looking for the position. Okay? And, and so, uh, I'm very much interested in, uh, hiring a person as soon as I can. But again, I- But again, I have to jump through some hoops, right? I got to talk to the, to the union. I've got to go make sure Keith and Tim Gary are okay with this. I've got to come back to council. So on your agenda, not only will there be an appropriations change that I assume will come with the rest of the stuff, it'll also be asking you to update the, uh, the ordinance 2000, number 33, 2009, to add a tax clerk in there. So when you see that, that's, that's what that's going to be. And I'll write a little letter, but, you know, you four out of the seven and I could talk to, uh, who, Joe, Marilyn and who, is somebody behind me?
Joe.
Oh, gosh. I could talk to Joe and Marilyn and Eric, you know, kind of bring them up to date too. But at least you four know, you know, when you see that on your agenda, what the heck is this, adding the tax clerk? That's, that's what it's all about.
So procedurally to do this, um, like we can't, I know that you all know this, but I'm just going to say it for the people at home, uh, we can't increase our appropriations based higher than what we have in the fiscal recovery plan without changing the plan. And so the plan will get changed at some point, you know, probably first or second quarter of this year as we kind of make adjustments as we know more things like regarding health insurance and regarding other things. So even after, so we change the plan and then the fiscal recovery commission has to approve it and then we go back and change our appropriations. I would think that it could be quicker to at least go ahead and at least explore maybe posting as a union position, you know, externally. I don't know what the prep process is, but...
Well, I'm, I'm hoping, I mean, I, the reason I'm here is to just kind of feel you guys out saying, yeah, that, that kind of sounds reasonable. Keep going, Tim, and do what you got to do. But, um, you know, I know Thursday, the folks from the state are going to be here. So I'll run this past April and Anna Mary and say, hey, this is what's cooking. Um, I don't know how soon they're going to want to change the plan, especially if they're, if we're going to say, hey, the revenue is going to be 18 million or something like that and not 17 million 277, 233. What the heck was the number?
Two, uh, 266.
266, yeah. So 1% more than 171, which was, was still in the plan. So I know there's going to be a ton of changes, uh, and so, uh, so no, I just wrote that down, James, because that wasn't something I was thinking about, but you're right, you're absolutely right. I'm going to have to get them to buy off on that too.
And frankly, they're going to have to change the plan because they have to change every personnel key because of the increased health insurance. The, you, the plan will not cover the current insurance rates, so that thing has to be rewritten anyway.
Which will give you all a little bit more likely in your appropriations for your personnel services already when they do that, because they're going to, we're going to look at everything that we need and make that adjustment.
No, that's an excellent point. So what's, what's in the, my current permanent appropriations column would go up anyway because of the healthcare amounts, even if I wasn't sitting here, that would go up. You're right.
Gotcha, yeah.
So we'll get closer than the 10,000 extra dollars that I want. And in fact, it might be less unfortunately.
Yeah, it might be.
So, yeah, I would just say, I know we need to get going to our next topics, but let's keep the conversation going. I'll reach out to you and, uh, we'll talk further. Maybe we'll schedule some time at our next finance meeting to discuss this further, but I definitely appreciate it.
I told you I was only going to take 10 minutes, so everything worked out fine, right?
Yeah, so appreciate you being here.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, is it good?
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
So now I'll kind of turn it over to our auditor, Jim Stith, to present to us, we can see auditors' report and just our current state of finances.
Great. Thank you very much. I've got a fair amount of material to go over tonight just to bring you guys up to speed. The first thing is the auditor's report for the general fund for 2017 is published. It's out there on norwoodauditor.com. You can download it, print it out, or you can look at most of it just by going to the tab and scrolling through. It starts with a letter and report description, so I'm just going to read this letter if you'll bear with me. It's got the numbers for the closeout of the year. This is the preliminary auditor's report for the year ending 12/31/2017. It offers pictorial representations of the financial activity in 2017. This report includes breakdowns of revenue sources, expenditures by departments, year-to-year comparisons, and a breakdown of healthcare and overtime costs. In 2017, the city's general fund cash expenditures were $22,171,293. This outspent its revenues of $21,943,769 with expenses exceeding revenues by $227,524 on a cash basis. With the year beginning with a negative balance of negative $904,470, the initial cash amount carried forward into 2018 is negative $1,131,994. Including outstanding encumbrances of $193,816, the year-end unencumbered cash balance is negative $1,325,810. Comparisons of yearly revenue and expenses are included in this report on page five and six. While some areas of revenue underperformed, not meeting projections, overall revenue is expected to be stable in 2017 based on economic development and the city continues to experience. In 2017, the greatest revenue sources for the general fund, earning tax receipts, increased while we continued to experience a decrease in our intergovernmental revenue. From 2008 to 2017, the annual decrease in intergovernmental revenue of $159,586 for tangible personal property tax, negative $479,318 in House Bill 66 reimbursees for TTP reduction, negative $233,148 in inheritance tax, and negative $466,716 in local government funds. 2013 was the final year that the city received regular revenue from inheritance tax. All of these are detailed on page nine. In 2013, the city implemented a local hotel tax which generates, which generated $185,014 revenue in 2017. Overall, the city's greatest expense is personnel-related expenditures at $18,120,455, which is 81% of the general fund revenue, with the largest departments being police and fire. An increase in personnel and other insurance costs in 2017 was due in part to payments owed to the police and fire pension fund from previous years, employee fringe benefits owed from previous years, and retiree health benefits owed from 2016. These obligations have all been paid to date. The greatest revenue source is local earnings tax, $17,266,398, an increase of $1,975,820 from 2016. Increases in expenses over 2016 were mainly due to expenses incurred in 2016 and paid in 2017. Overtime composed 1.2% of the general fund personnel expenses totaling $272,14, which is a decrease of $290,947 from 2016. The two largest departments, police and fire, were the largest recipients of overtime, though the fire department had a significant decrease in overtime due to the decreased minimum manning requirements. A detailed overtime analysis by department is included on page 13. The 2017 total healthcare costs for the general fund were $3,226,981. The city spent or encumbered $2,115,434 on healthcare and dental optical benefits for its current employees and $1,111,547 on retirees' healthcare plan and C9 cash reimbursement plan to a select group of retirees. This represents 14% of the total general fund expenditures. Health insurance premiums for city employees have increased 25% for 2018. The city ended 2017 with total encumbrances of $193,816. The outstanding encumbrances from 2017 are primarily fourth quarter expenses invoiced after 12/31/2017. In October of 2016, the state auditor's office placed Norwood in the fiscal emergency. Under the direction of the fiscal emergency commission and the auditor of state, the city has operated with an, with an encumbered balance of negative $1,325,810. This is a decrease from the projected negative $2 million that was projected in the 2018 tax budget mainly due to increased revenues and expenses which were planned for December being paid in January of 2018. The city's fiscal emergency plan adopted by city council and the fiscal emergency commission projects the city to have a positive cash balance at the end of 2020. All city spending must follow this plan which establishes a yearly budget. Changes to this plan must be approved by the fiscal emergency commission. This report also contains reference material including the 2017 statement of cash position, revenue reports for 2005 through 2017, detailed report with itemized expenses by department, and the year-end auditor's report contains the initial totals of the year-end closeout for 2017 and are presented in unaudited form. Fully audited detailed information will be available in the 2017 GAAP report, which should be completed in the spring of 2018. I hope you find this information useful. Then we have pages of some really nice charts and graphs. It makes things kind of simple to look at. Revenue versus expenses, general fund revenue and expenses over the years, earnings tax revenue, general fund revenue, all presented as bar graphs, and then pie charts. Where does the majority of the revenue sources come from, from the city? Monthly earnings tax revenue, intergovernmental revenue, all those numbers I was reading about how much certain areas drop, they're all detailed year-to-year here. Where does all the general fund money go? Well, here's a nice pie chart. It's on the front page of my website. You can look at norwoodauditor.com and see that. The miscellaneous expenditures that we see, expenditures by key, personnel being the largest, overtime analysis here, uh, healthcare-related expenses, and then breakdowns of police and fire payroll expenses, and the cash position report. And then you get into kind of the meat of the report, which are these pages with long numbers going across. This is every key in all funds that generate revenue, recording the amount that was generated from that key each year from 2005 to 2017. If you want to look at what the earnings tax has done every year, you can just follow that across. It's the second one on the page. If you want to look at how much traffic fines were brought in, it's all there too. Then you get past that, you get into the budget breakdown, which is each department, each key, how much was spent each year, spent and encumbered from 2007 to 2017. You can see, uh, kind of that ebb and flow of expenses as you go across. So that report is available. There's also a lot of supplemental material online. I hope you all enjoy it. Do you have any questions on the auditor's report? Do you want me to go into the next explanation here?
Yes, please.
So at the end of every month, we have what we call a closeout, which is where we balance with the treasurer's office for our revenues and expenditures and we create documents which are a series of reports that all look into our database and present our financial data in a myriad of different ways, depending on how you ask the question. So these reports are now being produced as PDF documents electronically and the only paper copy is the one that, that I get. This is that big stack, if you ever see me at council meetings or finance meetings and somebody asks a question, and I whip this out and I go, this is the number, this is where it comes from. We've made this information public. The one I have here is actually the full year closeout from 2017. It has all the financial data in it. This is available on norwoodauditor.com. If you go to the top, you'll see year-end and month-end closeouts. If you click on that line, you can download each one of these separate documents as well as the key explaining what each one is. These are also emailed to all members of the finance committee. When we close out January, they're going to start going to all members of council as well as to department heads and anybody else who's interested. So since other people were looking at it, I'm now going to tell you what these are and how to read them. So there is a page called the monthly financial reports guide that tells you what each report is. There's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven of them that we're going to look at. Now, the first one's very short. It's only a couple of lines and it's called the bank report. This is very simple, uh, and if you guys look, I gave you the first page of each one of these reports so you can mark them up. But the bank report being the one on top, uh, it tells you the date and it shows you at the end, the very bottom right-hand corner, the ending balance for the bank report. You'll see it's $7,433,940.35. That's an easy one, self-explanatory. The next one, which is my favorite and probably most important one, is the statement of cash position. This is a two-page report, front and back. And what this is, is it shows for each fund that the city has, starting with the general fund at top, which is the big one that that big report I just went through, uh, was just detailing, uh, it shows the beginning balance at the beginning of the year, and then it shows receipts, how much revenues come into each fund, month-to-date and year-to-date. Then it shows disbursements, how much has gone out of the fund, month-to-date and year-to-date. And then you'll see there's a column that says unexpended balance. And if you look on the back, all the way to the bottom of unexpended balances, it has a total number there of $7,433,940.35, which matches the bank report. This is basically saying, we take all the money in the bank, how is it divided up between funds? This is how it's divided up. You can see how much money comes into each individual fund and how much goes out of each individual fund. Then there's a column saying outstanding encumbrances. Those are the open purchase orders that are encumbered, money that's not to be used or is earmarked to be used for something else. And at the end, you'll see the ending balance, which is how much after, if you take your unexpended balance and you add in those encumbrances, what do you have left in each fund as a balance? And you'll see that negative on the very top on the general fund at the end of last year, $1,325,809.60, which is our negative amount. So each thing that we look at after this takes one of these columns and expands on it, whether it's a revenue or expense. So the next one we're going to look at is called the revenue report. And if you look at the revenue report, it's much thicker than the one page you have because it is every fund and it shows month-to-date and year-to-date revenue by key for each fund. If you look at, um, just the first four pages, it's just general fund, well, really, three and a half pages, it's just all general fund. It's each key. This is what is shown in that auditor's report. When you go look at the revenue section, this will be, the totals here, year-to-date are the 2017 year-to-date. That follows this same, um, the same flow, the same organization as this revenue report, but it has historic data going back to 2007 through 2017. So you can look historically at it. This one just shows month-to-date and year-to-date for the current year that you're in.
Can I interrupt for a second? You said the revenue report, year-to-date revenue matches the numbers in the 2017 auditor's report?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, because this closed out.
Got it.
But you're going to be getting these every month. So if you're looking at it and you're like, wow, I wonder where we sit as far as, um, how much have we brought in in a specific key, like hotel tax? How much did you think we're going to bring in as the first column? Expected revenue? That's our estimates based on our certificate of estimated resources, how much we're going to bring in. Then you take your year-to-date revenue and then it shows the uncollected balance. It'll actually say there's still this much money to come and then the percentage collected is the last one. So if you're halfway through the year, you probably should see about a 50% collection. And the majority of these keys, although some do, uh, follow different kind of cash flow cycles, it comes in and out, this is going to be a quick analysis where you could just pull up any fund. Most of this is, the big chunk is the general fund, but you'll be able to see where we sit on our revenue versus our revenue, our revenue expectations. The next one we're going to do is the expense report with month-to-date. This is important because it does show not only the year-to-date amount that is expended out of each key, it shows what they did that particular month. So the first column that says budget amount is a little misleading. For expense reports, just straight expense reports, the budgeted amount is not the amount that you've appropriated in the budget for the general fund or for any fund. This amount is actually the amount that's been appropriated plus any open purchase orders or encumbrances from the previous year. Those two numbers added together, because this is a cash report, it's saying not only do they have what's budgeted for this year, but here's all this, these things... do they have what's budgeted for this year, but here's all this, these things they promised to pay from the previous year, too. So, when you look at this report, you're going to see some variance, and that number will change through the year as these things kind of, not on this one, that'll stay the same, but you'll see that when we look at other reports, they will change a little bit as the year goes on. But here, this is all open purchase orders at the beginning of the year plus the current budget. Month-to-date expense, year-to-date expense, those are pretty self-explanatory. Your encumbrances, those are your open POs. And then on the far right, you'll notice there's a lot of these numbers that have negatives next to them, and that's because there's zero appropriated or budgeted to those keys. So, for example, if you just look at city council, you'll see there's money appropriated to salaries. That's your 7100 key. We don't budget individually line items for workers' comp, Medicare, and PERS. They just all come out of the key above it. We're not line item each one of those expenses. We just say from all of your 7100 keys, which is your personnel, they all come out of the 7100, so we don't have to do each one. So, that's why you have negative numbers on the right, but at the bottom, it should not be negative. It should be, you know, you should have some left over. That unencumbered balance at the beginning of the year is going to be huge, because that's the amount that's left for the rest of the year, and then it decreases with each report you do as the year goes on. This report, for every key and every fund, for every department, details how much is spent. If you want to look at the auditor's office and see what we spent on computers, that line is on there, and you can see that. Now, this is similar to the report that's in the auditor's report where you can look across, but that is the last, or the second last one we're going to do, which is the current-year-only report. This is cash. This is how much cash is being spent. This is not directly related to your budget or appropriations. The next one is Expense Report with Encumbrance Detail. So, we talk about encumbrances, and we're like, "Well, what does that column mean when you say there's $500 encumbered?" Well, this is the same Expense Report, but what it does is whenever there is a purchase order, instead of just giving you the number, it actually lists the purchase order number and what it's for, and how much it is and how much the balance is on it. So, when you look through this, you know, you would just look at this and say, "Well, there's a $500 encumbrance in the auditor's office. Where is it?" You would look down to the auditor's office here on this one, and it would tell you specifically what that's for. So, this is more of a reference to see what the open purchase orders are. And then we get into the budgetary ones. So, there's two Expense Reports left. Expense Account Current Year Only and Expense Report with Prior Year. Remember how we said that the Expense Reports always have the current appropriations plus any encumbered amounts from the previous years, those purchase orders which are still open? So, if we take that information, we say, "Wait, I only want to see this year's expenses related to this year's budget, not the stuff from last year that you're paying like your fourth-quarter energy bills, right? Those invoices that didn't come in until January, but that were incurred in December. Let's take those out, because they're not part of the 2018 budget." You would use this report. This report only shows the budget for this year, the appropriations, well, this was 2017, because the one in January will show what it is for this year, year-to-date expenses coming out of that, how much is unexpended, your encumbrance is left, and how much is left unencumbered, and the percentage that remains. So, if you get to July, June, we close out June, and you look at it, and all of a sudden, there's a lot of these keys that that is below 50% remaining, then you're knowing they're going over their budget at that point. And then you would look at it and say, "Well, maybe there's just a lot of expenses early in the year for that." But if they're projecting that their expenses are going to be pretty even throughout the year, those ones that would be lower than 50% should be your red flags. So, when you're talking about budget, this is the one you want to look at, because this tells you how much is spent out of the budget so far and what it's spent on. And again, it has each individual line item on it. So, if you want to know computers for the auditor's office, it's there. The other one you have, which is the last one, I promise, is the Expense Report with Prior Year. So, since we took all of the prior year's expenses out of the Expense Account Current Year, we made a separate report with those on it. If you add these two together, this equals the Expense Report with Month-to-Date, because it's last year's encumbrances, the prior year's encumbrances, the prior year's expenses paid on this year, and this year's expenditures paid on the budget. So, that one doesn't get a lot of use, but if you look back and you're like, "Well, why was there an extra $200 paid out of this key?" You could look back and say, "Oh, yeah, that was the Duke bill from the previous December." So, Expense Account Current Year Only, that's the one that I use in my office the most for me when I'm looking at budgetary data, and that is the one that is represented in the auditor's report, but you've got 10 years' worth of them, each one a column across. So, that was easy. Do you have any questions about this?
Not yet.
Okay. There is another document you can download, and I know it was sent an email to all of you guys, which is a key description. And so, when we look at all of these numbers and we say, you know, like, "01-0842-7200", you know, or you say, "01-0842-7111", what do those mean? Well, the first one is the general fund. That's the fund name. 01 General Fund, 02 Street Fund. There's a key that explains all of this that you could download, and it's several pages long, but it goes through, and it even tells you, like, 71 is personnel, and under that it has all of the 71 keys. But those keys carry over department to department, so 7111 is overtime. And that's overtime for the fire department, the auditor's office for anybody. If you find a 7111 key is the last four numbers, that is overtime. 0842 is the fire department. You know, 0832 is the police department. Each one of those keys, as you go down through this material, it tells you next to it what it is also. But once you start to know where those are, like, if you know Public Lands and Building is 0911, you can flip to that page pretty quickly. So, you do want to look at that key description, which we have printed copies in my office people can pick up, or they're on norwoodauditor.com under the Budget tab and under the same tab that has the month-to-date and year-to-date reports, plus they're emailed to most people. So, you guys are all experts in this now.
And just so the rest of the committee knows, Leslie's working with TA Brown to try to get us a computer that we can use, where we can kind of, you know, you can come to council, or you can come to city hall and really dig into, if you want to dig into something specific on eGov and really pull in, you'll be able to do that. Or you can always go to the auditor's office and ask for more details about any kind of thing that you want to look at. And then, Jim, these reports, they're updated monthly, like, for the month-to-date ones. When could that be expected to be, like, finally each month?
We always do it within about the first 10 days. Usually, it's within the first five business days. Because we have to balance with the treasurer's office, they have to first balance with all of the departments turning in their cash. So, they've been turning in cash throughout the month and turning in all their receipts, and then the records from each department have to match the records from the treasurer's department. Some of those do that throughout the month, others wait till the end. So, that tends to be the time lag mostly. And then we're entering data throughout the month, and Chuck is entering data over in the earnings tax and treasurer's office throughout the month. And then, once we completely balance both of those books, then we close out, and it generates the month-end reports. And prints them out, one copy, and does the rest printed into PDF. And then we start the next month.
Okay, great. So, if we're looking at, like, a February meeting, what would be the earliest and you would be comfortable scheduling it for us to be able to review these?
Usually, I'd say, you know, at least the second week. I mean, I would wait probably five to seven business days.
Okay. Awesome. Do you might have any questions about the reports?
No, sir.
Awesome. Okay, great. This is good, give us stuff to dig into. Thanks again for getting the auditor's report out.
Any of you that want to sit down and need more time on how to read these, or once you guys are hooked up to eGov and able to generate your own reports, this is only seven of them, and there's probably about 40 different ones, each one looking at the material in a different way, because it is a database. So, you query the database to generate reports based on the type of information you want. And once you get into doing that, that's when it really gets fun, because you can customize things, but you can find your answers quicker, because you know the correct questions.
So, with, yeah, so I definitely appreciate it again. Was there anybody else? Bobby, did you have anything you wanted to talk to us about?
I have tonight on the...
Okay, great, yeah, absolutely. So, I'd like to go ahead and schedule then our next two meetings. I'd like to get one for February in that, probably that second-week timeframe, and get one for March scheduled as well, so that we can try to get it on the books and plan before you, the auditor, is not in town. So, the date, anyway, so hopefully you all have your calendars. So, the date I was looking at is... Yeah, so how does February, Monday, February 12th look? Monday, February 12th.
It's great for me.
Is it good for you?
That'll work.
Okay. Does that work for you, Jim, too?
Uh, I'm checking something.
You think at same time, 6:00?
Probably 6:00 o'clock, yeah.
Yes, as far as I know.
Okay, great. So, yeah, we'll schedule it then to, yeah, Monday, February 12th at 6:00 PM here in council chambers, we'll hold our next meeting. At that point, we'll know a little bit more about what the Fiscal Recovery Commission and the state auditors are thinking with regards to the fiscal recovery plan. We definitely will have to make some changes, just due to health insurance, increased costs, and there's some other changes that will need to be made when new things are discovered. At that point, too, I'd like to invite, like, start inviting department heads to come in, maybe on a rotating basis, so that we can kind of talk about just some of the appropriations that they have and kind of what some of their plans are. So, do you have a preference for who you might want to invite in first, or just kind of, we'll see, or I can make that decision later?
I don't have a preference.
I'm not really, no.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, unless there's a department that has a bunch of needs or something. It doesn't matter to me.
Cool, excellent, yeah. So, I'll reach out to a few and see who might have availability that day and we'll send them in. So, perfect. Jim, is there anything else that you have for us, or?
No, I would just like to comment on kind of, I think, the flow of the year as far as what's going to go on. We've got to talk to the state auditors, because the plan has to change. And so, we need to figure out what those projections are for changes just related to healthcare and personnel issues, and when I say "we," I mean, I do it. And then come up with new payroll projections based on those increased expenses. And once we have those, then looking at the plan and having Tim Maloney turning over the data about the earnings tax revenue, compare that to the other revenue, and have them use that to rewrite the plan. And then, as soon as the plan's rewritten and accepted by the Fiscal Emergency Commission, probably that next meeting, we just take whatever the plan is now and change the appropriations to match that. So, that's kind of the flow of how that's going to happen, but the state is, they've got to be involved in it, and anything that you guys think of between, like, now and then, or things that you think have to change within the appropriations, that has to be put in the plan. So, we'll see. Then that changes the projections and everything else, and once that happens, then we'll know where we're going to be the end of this year, the end of next year, which is a little rosier, I think, but not fantastic. I will be preparing the Certificate of Estimated Resources, probably be done with it next week, and submit it to the county. For those of you that haven't been on the finance committee before, the Certificate of Estimated Resources is the amount that we estimate is available for budgeting, for appropriations, in each fund that is approved by the county and then sent back to us. And if they have questions about it, I have to go down before the county budget commission. Normally, when you're budgeting, when you're writing your appropriations, you cannot exceed the amount that's on that certificate. It has to be under it. However, since we're on fiscal emergency, according to the state, we are allowed to budget up to the amount of our revenue for the year, because we have been running at a negative. And as long as, on the fiscal emergency plan, that keeps showing it moving, you know, that we're coming up to a positive, they're allowing that. But normally, when that's made, you cannot exceed that amount on any of your appropriations.
So, you're saying we can budget up to what's in the projected revenue?
That's the way the state is writing the plan.
Okay.
But they're not, they're actually wanting us to be under that, so the negative decreases.
Got it.
We've got to move into the black as quickly as we can, and then we can move out of, be closer to moving out of fiscal emergency and start doing things that we need to do.
Did you have anything else?
Yeah, just based on what Jim shared, does the 12th still seem like enough time?
It may or may not be. We could schedule a March meeting if we want to, to at least have that. I will be out of, I will not be available the last two weeks in February, so from the 19th through the 28th, I won't be available to meet during that time. So, basically, yeah, it needs to be during that week. We can move it to, like, a Thursday, if you think that'll help of that week, so instead of the 12th being like the 15th or the 14th.
I don't have a preference. I just wasn't certain if, in fact, we're getting feedback from you and the certificate and from the county and from the commission. I don't know when the commission meets in the month of February, if they meet in February.
They haven't set a date yet.
Okay.
If they do.
So, the 12th would be ideal if...
Yeah, I think if we leave it...
Everything flows.
Yeah, if we, I'd say we leave it for the 12th now. If we have to make a game-day decision to move it, you know, to a different time, we can do that, to a different day. And then for March, then, do we want to look at March 12th as well to meet, so it's a Monday?
March 12th?
Yeah, Monday, March 12th at 6:00 PM.
It's good for me.
Or at least a pencil in. We can always change it if schedules change, but...
It's okay with me.
Okay. Cool, so we'll pencil that in. Okay, we'll pencil that in there. Awesome. Jim, just want to thank you again for being here for the auditor's report. There's a lot of great information in there, so I encourage residents to definitely go and look at that. And, yeah, so if there's nothing else, then I guess we will adjourn. Is that sound good?
Cool.
Thanks.
I'll second that.
Excellent. Well, we don't, traditionally, we haven't needed a motion in our committee meetings, but I'm glad that you are a forward councilperson. Just hear a second.